Okay, good evening and welcome to the August thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Haverford Township Planning Commission. Uh, Kelly, could you please call roll?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Present.
Mr. Reardon?
Present.
Mr. Pointon?
Present.
Mr. Shannon?
Present.
Ms. Dobbs?
Here.
Mr. Fierdumondo? Mr. Garrett?
Here.
Okay, for the record, I'd like to mention that Dr. Hart is a member of the Board of Commissioners is with us this evening, as is Paul David, and I assume Paul is a member of the Shade Tree Commission. Would I be correct in that assumption?
That is correct.
Thank you, okay. Um, okay, so, so the first item on our agenda this evening, I'm sorry, I'd ask everyone to, uh, repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, okay. First item on the agenda is the minor subdivision at two oh one Greenbrier Lane. I see the, uh, representative of, uh, I'm sorry, Chris Yon, the, the, uh, civil engineer of record is with us, as is Mr. Spazato. Vince, you there?
I am, yes, I cannot get my video to work, I apologize.
Thank you. Um, okay, Chris, when we left off last time, you had some items to address on your plans, and I know that you resubmitted your plans, and we have a review letter dated August the twelfth, twenty twenty from Pinoni Associates. Um, why don't you, uh, quickly go through that letter, uh, let us know where things stand, and, uh, if you have any questions or, or comments regarding the review letter.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I did receive the review letter, and I did go over that with Mr. Faulkner, and I think I'm clear on all the, the changes we need. I don't think anything is questionable, but I'll run through them to tell you how we are going to make the revisions. So, item one has to do with the steep slopes. Um, in the beginning is the original comment, and then the follow-up says adjustments to various steep, or to steep and very steep slopes have been made, additional modifications are necessary in various areas of lots to fully delineate all slopes. Uh, there was an area behind, uh, the detached structure on Lot Two, uh, that Mr. Faulkner wants designated as steep slopes, and so I'm gonna make the change to the plan to address that, that will not affect any of the proposed improvements. It's in an area outside of disturbance.
Okay, go on, Chuck Faulkner.
Yes.
Is the amount of disturbance that is being done within the limits that's allowed by code?
It's up to fifteen percent is what's.
So it's right at the limit?
It, it's close.
It's close, okay. And other than that, it's just a matter of delineating everything that's on the property?
Yeah, we want to clean up the plan to make sure that it's accurate, in case, you know, in the future, someone wants to do something, they know what's there.
Okay, all right. So this is an item that you think can be resolved without much of a problem?
Should be able to, Mr. Cruden, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
And number two says the air questionable title shall be resolved in documentation of the resolution provided prior to, uh, prior to final plan approval. So, right around we were submitting is when we were resolving this, I didn't have a chance to revise on the plan, but, uh, basically, it, it was questionable between this property and the adjacent, and to make it easier, Mr. Spazato said, leave it to the adjacent property, we'll take it out of ours. I didn't have a chance to correct that yet, but we will, um, to address that item.
Okay.
The next says an approved planning module, or an approved Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewerage Facilities Planning Module or Exemption is required. So we do have to go through the full planning module process. We do have the letter from RHM and, uh, Delcora and the other entities that, that each of they, uh, those agencies represent, uh, and we submitted a letter to Philadelphia Water Department, and we're waiting to hear back from them. So once we have all of those approvals, we will package the planning module together and submit it to the township and then DEP for final approval.
Okay.
Uh, item four says, uh, this is regarding the driveway, and we were too close to the intersection, so I'm just gonna read the follow-up portion of the comment, says partially addressed. The applicant has revised the driveway configuration for Lot One to enable a car to turn around and pull out onto the street rather than back out. The configuration, however, proposes a driveway that exceeds the maximum twenty-five foot width permitted under one eighty-two dash seven oh seven A four. The applicant shall investigate alternative configurations that are in conformance with one eighty-two dash seven oh seven A four. And so, we are, I, I will trim the driveway so that we are right at that twenty-five foot width. Uh, it means that instead of pulling, once you're pulling out of the garage, instead of backing up one way and then going right out towards the street, we'll probably have to back up a little bit, pull forward, back up again, and then go out. So it, it adds a little bit of a turning movement, but we will comply with that.
Okay.
In that section. Number five is regarding the tree removal, and so the follow-up question says the applicant should provide the report from the certified arborist regarding the thirteen trees to be removed to the Shade Tree Commission. So I believe we did already forward that to the Shade Tree Commission, however, since that original report was done, uh, two other neighbors have expressed concerns to Mr. Spazato, and his tree guy was out. Two additional times has two additional reports, um, that were forwarded to me today, and so we have, we have to forward those to the Shade Tree Commission yet.
Have you met with them yet?
We have not, we have emailed information to them, but I don't believe they've had a meeting, uh, in recent months. So we're, we're happy to meet with them, but we have not yet.
Paul, how are you handling that on your end?
Uh, we have not seen the plans yet, as far as I know, and we have had Zoom meetings every month, and I think, you know, usually, uh, it's Joe Celia that presents the plans to us, so he gets them and.
Okay, Kelly, can you make sure that, that the Shade Tree Commission gets a copy of the plans?
Um, I can forward them to, uh, to liaison for the Shade Tree Commission, but, um, if you wouldn't mind, um, when you do have the revised plans for them to review, if you could just email them over to me, uh, and that way, actually, do you guys prefer physical copies? The Shade Tree Commission, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, physical copy.
I'm sorry, if you could, uh, and there's seven of you now, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, seven physical copies, or eight for one for the office as well. That'd be great.
Okay, Chris, um, the Shade Tree Commission has to weigh on, has to review the plans and give you their comments, both on the plans and the, the reports that your arborists did before this can move on to the Board of Commissioners, you understand that, okay?
I understand that it needs to go to the Shade Tree Commission. I guess the part I don't understand is, uh, whether it needs to go back to the Planning Commission. My understanding with most municipalities is that the board, uh, takes reports from each of the separate commissions, and so I understand we need to go to Shade Tree, and the board can't act on it before we get, uh, a recommendation from Shade Tree, but I assume we can still get through the Planning Commission.
Oh, we'll see. Okay, number seven.
Number seven says, uh, the follow-up says note two on sheet four shall clearly indicate the quantity of future impervious accounted for in the current design for each lot. In addition, the calculations within the stormwater management report must document all assumptions used to develop the system. Finally, the proposed building coverage for Lot Two indicated in the summary table on sheet one is inconsistent with both the measured area and stormwater management report. So, those are all, will comply items. The issue with the building coverage is it's the same building on both lots, but Lot Two shows a higher, uh, square footage, and that's because we're including the detached structure in the back, so I'm gonna separate that out, so it, it's clear, uh, why that lot has more. Uh, we're, I talked to Mr. Faulkner about this, we're also going to, uh, we have one note on the plan that's in sentence form about the future impervious, and I'm gonna change that to be a chart, and I'm gonna, uh, expand on it so that it, it notes for each lot how much was designed for and what the future is. So, it doesn't, uh, there's no changes to the calculations that need to be done, it's just, uh, a change to the presentation of the, the future impervious, so that it's clear for future owners.
Okay?
Number eight, uh, says the uncontrolled drainage area does not appear to include a portion of the infiltration bed number one. So, we did revise the calculations to try to include everything, but I think we slid the system over a few feet after we got the filed a servency area, so, uh, we will, we'll comply with this, uh, we'll revise it again to make sure it's right. Um, number nine, uh, it was regarding the location of the spreaders, it says partially addressed. The applicant has adjusted the location of the level spreaders to provide for overland flow before reaching the steep slopes. Some level of modification, i.e. drain holes may be required to the wall on Lot One to avoid blocking the flow and/or directing flow towards Lot Two. So, we will, uh, we'll address that comment. I believe Mr. Faulkner and I discussed that before, and we were gonna show a little regrading to get the water, uh, next to the wall, on the, uh, on the high side of the wall, to make sure it gets into that swale at the, the lower side of the lot.
Okay.
Um.
Ten and eleven, forget, I mean, that's standard stuff, I understand that.
Yep. Uh, number twelve is monuments to be added at the corner of the questionable area title, so that will do. The new comments, uh, number thirteen has to do with the chimney projection, uh, we show it as twenty-four inches, and so I will revise it to be eighteen, so it complies with the code. And number fourteen is, is the note that you requested for the right-of-way, which you add to the plan.
Okay, add to that the, um, meets and downs for the ultimate right-of-way. That information still has to be added to the title plans, so that when someone writes a legal description, they'll have something to write.
Okay.
Um, kind of to follow up with, um, along the same lines, are we going to be, are you gonna revise and, um, re-record the deed for the neighboring property once the title's, um, situation is taken care of?
I will confirm that with the surveyor, but I believe we won't have to re-record the one for the adjacent property, because that's the one that we will say is, is correct, and we'll adjust this property to match that.
Okay, so, so that's, that, that's already included in their meets and downs description?
I believe so, but I'll confirm that.
Super.
Okay, so it sounds like you intend to comply with all the comments in the latest review letter?
That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, who's here, Jack? Have any questions or comments, Jack?
Uh, no, I wasn't clear on whether or not we required the shared driveway or not. I, I was looking at the notes on that, and I couldn't see.
No, we, we kinda felt that wasn't appropriate in this case.
I have no comments.
Okay. Maggie, I know you have a comment.
I, I don't actually, um.
You do, yes you do.
Do I?
Yeah. There's a shade tree that was supposed to be moved off the property line, that's still on the property line.
Yes, that's right. Um, right, so I had asked before, there was the one tree that was on the property line, so just confirm that that would be on officially one property or the other, to clarify ownership and maintenance.
Right, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome. Jesse?
I have no comments.
Why is it sunny where you are?
I'm a lot further east than you guys.
Okay. West, you mean?
No, east in Maine.
Okay.
Sunset.
Who else? Chuck, Mr. Reardon?
No, I'm fine.
You're okay?
Yeah.
All righty. I miss anybody? Dr. Hart, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, and, uh, Paul, at some point in time, your group is gonna get a set of plans and an arborist's report for this development, in which case you'll review the landscaping plan, proposed landscaping, and make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
While I have you, um, actually, this is, you should come to every meeting. Uh, your next meeting is August twenty-fourth?
Yes, that's correct. It'll be a Zoom meeting as, as well.
Chuck Faulkner, anything?
I don't have anything further.
Yes, Chris?
Uh, is there, and I, I should clarify, when I said we submitted, we submitted electronic copies to Mr. Celia, we did not submit paper copies yet. I was waiting for a confirmation of, of how many and when the meeting was. So now that I know the meeting is on the twenty-fourth, uh, Kelly, did you say there's seven members, so I should submit seven copies?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, you want an extra one, probably?
I was gonna say, yes, and, and one extra for the, for our files.
Okay, so eight copies, and is there a submission date in order to get on that agenda?
That is a.
One week, could be beforehand, would be nice.
Okay, so eight, eight, the seventeenth, okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's Monday.
Right.
Okay, um, all right. So, I would entertain a motion if anyone wants to make it regarding, uh, approval or disapproval of this plan.
Angelo, would you do that, because I believe under the circumstances, you have the, the, uh, ability to, uh, tie all of the pieces together better than anybody else.
All right, hold on. Dave, are you there? I don't hear or see anything.
Yes.
You there, Dave?
I am.
Oh, okay, we can't see you.
Uh, I have a little video problem, I'm working on it.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I didn't mean to skip over, uh, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm okay.
Okay. All right, well then I will make a motion that the, uh, proposed minor subdivision on Greenbrier Lane for, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I forget the name of the developer, Mr. Spazato, I know it's not called that, Sleepy Valley Holdings LLC. I recommend that that plan be approved, subject to the following conditions. Uh, first, that all the comments contained in the August twelfth, twenty twenty review letter of the township engineer be addressed to the satisfaction of the township, that the meets and downs data for the proposed right-of-way be added to the record plan, and that the all proposed shade trees be located at least two feet away from any property line or right-of-way line. And that the two waivers that the applicant is requesting, requesting regarding a location of storm drainage facilities within four hundred feet of the site, and the minimum required width of twenty-seven feet be approved.
I have a second to that.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions about the motion? Yeah. Okay, uh, Kelly can take roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, thank you, Vince, thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
And you can sign off.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess next on the agenda is, uh, proposed ordinance revising chapter one seventy, which is trees. And, uh, before we get into the nuts and bolts, I guess, Paul, if you wanna give us a little update on that, or what you guys are thinking?
Sure. Um, so the, the tree code has not been reviewed for many years. Um, I've been on that tree commission five years, and we haven't reviewed it, uh, through, through that period, so we decided last year to take a look at it, update it, and in that process began to look at some of the, uh, tree codes of adjacent townships, the Lower Marion, Radnor, Springfield, uh, Upper Darby, so forth. Um, and one of the issues that comes up as we review plans is there is, um, a part of the code entitled the tree protection zone. It's actually a misnomer, because it is actually a tree non-protection zone. Um, what it says is that a planned building or renovation, uh, plus sixteen feet around that footprint, uh, is not to be included in any, uh, tree replacement calculation. So, for example, you know, the, the, the plans that you were just reviewing at, uh, Greenbrier, which we haven't seen, uh, and I assume this is not the case, but if all of the trees, uh, on the property would be included within the proposed building, uh, lot, then none of those trees would be, uh, used in the tree replacement, and essentially, the developer could put buildings on that property, and there would be no trees whatsoever. So, over the years, we've lost quite a bit of tree canopy, uh, due to some of those issues, and as we looked at the other townships, none of the other townships had, uh, any code requirement like that. So, we have proposed eliminating that, so there is no longer a tree protection or a tree non-protection zone, and would require all developers to follow the current, uh, tree replacement formula for all the trees on the property. And that is very similar, again, to the, uh, other townships that we reviewed. So, the tree replacement formula is, um, a one inch to four inches for, uh, every tree that would be removed, um, unless it's damaged or diseased. And so an arborist's report would come in to us, telling us which trees might be damaged or diseased, they would not be counted, but all the other trees, um, we would ask for replacement, if they're gonna be removed on a one inch to four inch basis. We have also updated what we are calling a heritage tree, and a heritage tree is, um, used to be twenty-four inches, we've now upgraded that to thirty inches, uh, which is a little more lenient, but again, that follows much of what other townships are doing and what they consider to be heritage trees. Uh, if you are to remove a heritage tree that is not diseased or damaged, we require a one to one inch replacement. Theory there is that large trees obviously take a long time to grow. Large trees provide the most benefit to the community. Uh, there's a lot of research that's been done on what those benefits are. Obviously, you could see, you know, it cleans the air, particulate pollution, it, uh, absorbs CO2 and produces oxygen, um, it also helps reduce stormwater runoff. Um, studies have shown that it increases the economic values of properties, uh, and also reduces crime. So, our intention, obviously, is to maintain, uh, as much tree canopy as we can, uh, and the USDA Center for Urban Forest Research recommends a thirty percent tree canopy, uh, in suburban areas. Um, we have not assessed the tree canopy here in Haverford Township, uh, basically because we don't have the money to do that, and it's a rather significant undertaking. Um, one of the other things that we have done in terms of the, the code is update some of the, uh, permit requirements, such that if you're clearing trees, if there's a, uh, any, require a permit, if you're gonna clear, uh, six trees of six inches or more inches over the course of a year, or of course, if you're gonna replace a heritage tree, again, if these are not diseased or damaged, uh, and you would have an arborist's report that would, that would state that. Um, in the course of, of looking at some of the plans, we recognize that there are issues with, uh, trying to plant all of the trees that may be required in the, using the tree replacement formula. And there's utility right-of-ways, there's drainage issues, there's steep gradients and so forth. So, one of the things we've added in is a way for developers, if they cannot replace all of the trees using the tree replacement formula, is to give money to the township, for the township to then purchase trees and plant on public property. Um, in addition, we've cleaned up some of the language, uh, just to kinda update it. As I said, we haven't reviewed it in a number of years, so we, we've looked at what current language is from an arborist and landscape architect perspective, uh, and have included that. And actually, we have, two of our commission members are very highly, um, you know, uh, able to do this. I mean, one of our, uh, members is a, a certified master arborist, one of nineteen in the state of Pennsylvania. Uh, the other is a landscape architect, uh, whose offices are in Radnor, so he's very familiar with their code, and he's also done work at, um, Longwood Gardens. So, again, very technically competent and qualified to review and, and deal with some of these issues. So that's the basic gist of, of what we've done. Jerry, I don't know if you have any other comments you'd like to make?
Uh, that's where we started, um, Mark Pennington, who's the chair of the Shade Tree Commission, um, came to me last fall and said, really talking about the tree exclusion zone, and said, you know, this is something we need to fix. And then he said, once we fix that, we could move on, there's other things that need to be done, and decided if we were gonna make changes, let's try to do everything at once. So, um, during the past six to eight months of work with Mark and with Dave Berman, the township manager, trying to come up with this, it's very, almost exactly, um, the same type of ordinance that Radnor has. It's similar to Lower Marion, but closer to Radnor. They've, I talked to the chair of their commission, and they've not had prob, you know, it's worked well for them for about the last seven or eight years that it's, they've had it. So, um, we wanted to, we did bring it up to the board, but we did wanna bring it to, to the Planning Commission first, to see, get your impressions.
Okay, um, thank you. One question I have before I open it up for discussion, uh, Paul. This code or ordinance would apply to individual property owners?
Yes, it would.
Okay, whereas currently, it does not?
Uh, well, it does, I mean, it relates to all public, uh, shade trees, so, um, any.
Can you improve that, that, that definition for me? Does that mean a pro, a tree that not necessarily planted in the right-of-way or in a public place, but overhangs some public, uh, property? So if I have a tree out front, for example, that may overhang this, the, 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 uh, the right-of-way, then that becomes a public shade tree?
Yes.
No, that, actually, I don't think that is true. I, I think the, with the public are ones that are in the right-of-way, there's language in it for trees that overhang, um,
true.
And, uh, the public shade tree, I think, are those that are in the right-of-way.
That's interesting, 'cause I'm reading here about, about, uh, okay, they were talking about driveways, and they consider that to be public trade tree. I just misunderstood, sorry, and I interrupted, and it was not my time, I apologize.
Any answers to my, well, I don't got, I don't think I got an answer to my question. If I have twenty trees in the back of my house today, and wanna cut them all down, can I do it without a permit?
Uh, today, no, there's still the issue of, of clearing. So you, if you're gonna cut down more than six trees, you would need a permit. If you cut down one, two, or three trees, you would not.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, what I like to do is, when, when we, when, when the Planning Commission is asked to look at an ordinance, I like to go through it and kinda make sure the wording makes sense, make sure there's no inconsistencies with other provisions in the, say, subdivision lane development ordinance, or any other code requirements, things like that. I might suggest some wording changes to make things a little more clear. I try not to fool with the intent of the ordinance, but, uh, unfortunately, I do make a lot of red line suggestions, if you will, and I hope you don't take offense at that, but that's just the way I was brought up in the business, and I can't help myself, you know what I mean?
Uh, no offense, I mean, there's been a lot of red lines as we've gone along, so adding to them would be a problem.
As Al Jolson said, you ain't seen nothing yet. Anyhow, let's start with the other members of the board. Uh, Jack, why don't you start us off, if you have any questions or comments?
Actually, I have two, I hope everyone can hear me, I have two questions. One, um, I like that there is now this fee in lieu of a replanting. Um, but my question is, what, what does the township do with that? Is, does the township have space then that they would replant trees on behalf of that owner, or is there actually more like a requirement for the owner to purchase other property or fund other property that is having, is, is, getting replanted, uh, in lieu of those trees? So, in, in other counties, in other states, what I've seen is that in lieu of replanting, if you can't replant enough, you have to actually fund a reservation that is for reforestation. And I just, so I wondered what the, the township would do with fees collected in lieu of a replanting?
Yeah, Phil, uh, the intent is to use the money for replanting. Um, there were, there was some concern, um, that we couldn't expressly put that, that we talked in the beginning about a, uh, shade tree fund, and that the township doesn't feel that they wanna separate. and that the township doesn't feel that they want to separate the funds, but that the, our intent is to use this money for shade trees.
We've actually done this in the past. Prior to, obviously this ordinance being in place, we've allowed developers to, to, you know, bank trees in lieu of planting when they aren't able to do it. Mr. Storage is a good example. I know that there was at least a couple others. What we've done is just, you know, taken the funding that would have gone to the types of trees that they would have had to plant and put it towards our Township Shade Tree budget line item.
Okay. So the second question I had is that what I don't see in here is any comments or requirements about pruning in the public right of way.
Yeah, I'm sure, I think there, actually, the-
There is, yeah, there is.
Yeah, anything in the public right of way is initially the township's. You need a permit to do it. And it's typically the township is going to do that work. So you're not, at least for a public shade tree. Now, if you have a tree that's not in the right of way, it's overhanging a sidewalk, then it's your responsibility to keep it trimmed, so that you're not blocking the sidewalk. But for the public shade trees-
You know, maybe it's, it's something that is-
Now, my number C4. Well, section 170-3B, the permit requiring, it talks about pruning, removing, spraying. So it's in that section there. Also in your general regulation, C4, does it say every property owner of trees standing on private property shall keep such trees trimmed so that the minimum clearance of any branch shall overhang any public walk is 12 feet for mature trees and nine feet for newly planted trees. And a minimum clearance where branches overhang any public street, highway or avenue is 14 feet. It specifically says that that's what they should keep them at?
Yep, I've read that. What I'm looking for is something that specifically is regulating what PICO is doing to the trees on the edge of my property. I don't know how that factors in across the rest of the township, but certainly it's something that, if it's not in this ordinance, it should be in some ordinance.
Unfortunately, we can't regulate PICO. We've tried and it, they, we have no authority if they, about what they do. We can request, but we cannot, we can't do anything about it.
I will let you know that I had a conversation with the PICO people in trying to screw with a couple of my beautiful big trees and gave the name of my attorney and they just kept going along the road. So, because I was willing to sue them.
They killed one of my trees.
Yeah, well, I'm telling you, I know. They, they came down and killed a bunch of trees on our property years ago too. It's just that.
Okay, so maybe it doesn't belong in this discussion, but it does belong in some discussion.
Somewhere, you're right.
Yeah, it's just, I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna be a bigger, it would be a state issue. It's just that we, as a township, we don't have authority to.
They're granted a lot of authority through the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, that we just don't have the authority to overrule or create rules for. So we could start the change there, but-
Those were my only two comments.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Maggie, you're up.
So I, along with this, are we updating the planting schedule? So do we have a list of approved trees that are suitable for canopy shade trees versus other types of planting? And is this, is this ordinance update going to be updating like a preferred planting list? Only because I know that there are some trees, obviously, that are more suitable to certain urban contexts and certain, like a suburban lawn context. So we want to make sure that we're getting the right species of tree for health, longevity, canopy coverage and those types of things. So is that part of this update at all?
We actually updated that last year. So there's a separate list of trees that is, should be on website of the Shade Tree Commission. And we do take a look at that on a regular basis and constantly update that, but didn't want to include that in the ordinance because it's something that we try and update on a regular basis.
Okay. So, let's see, I had another question. I'm trying to find where it was. So the fee in lieu is great. And I would definitely support that where we can't get it. I guess I'm still, I'm still, I guess, a little confused as to the, so it says public shade tree does include a tree of which any part extends within the lines of any public street, highway or avenue. So to me, that does read as if you have branches. So if you were to take the, the street line and draw a straight line up, that would, if you have a tree branch that overhangs that, that would then become a public tree?
That's my understanding, which is why I replied yes previously. So if someone was to cut the branch back to their, you know, the property line or out of the right of way, then it would no longer be a public tree.
Right, okay. And so then any, any kind of pruning would require a permit?
If it's, if it's a street tree, yes, but not, not otherwise.
Because I just know, like on my street, we have very, very short front yards. I'm up in Ward 5. And there is a few street trees. In, in the five years that we've lived here, we've seen a number of significant trees and less significant trees come down on our street. And no effort has been made to replace them. So I have lamented the loss of those. So I'm hoping that this ordinance would help us then replace those that have been cut down. But we have a number of smaller trees that are maybe only seven feet off of the edge of the sidewalk. And they're not super big canopy trees. They're, I don't know what kind of tree they are, but they're, they kind of look like the truffula trees in a way. But they're, they're pretty low. But I'm just wondering, like, maintenance of those, you're just kind of trimming off the bottom. So it's not, it's not like full limb cutting, but it's like minor pruning just with hand shears. So I'm just wondering, that just seems onerous for a resident to get an application for a permit if they're just going out and like trimming a couple, again, like not major limbs. We're just talking about, you know, pruning new growth so that when you're walking down the sidewalk, you're not being hit in the face with, with some low, low lying branches. So depending on the type of tree. So I, again, I just, I know the way that the language is stated, it would trigger a permit requirement for that type of pruning. And I just feel like that's a little onerous.
Yeah, and Jerry, you may want to comment on this, but my understanding is that the Public Works Department has a tree group that actually goes around and does some of that pruning. So that may, in a sense, take the place of what, you know, a private resident may want. And they can certainly call the Public Works and request that those trees be pruned if they find that it's onerous.
Well, the, the process of getting a permit is onerous, not the act of pruning them.
Right, right.
So, I mean, does Public Works come out? Like, do they notify the property owner? I'm just curious how this works, that they're going to come and prune?
They don't, I'm sorry, I, if you, do you mind? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be, yeah, sorry, too many people talking. Public Works will go out and trim street trees, trees that are within the right of way. They're not going to come out and trim a tree that is on private property but happens to be hanging over. So, so yes, what you're saying is the ordinance does read that that would be required to receive a permit and Public Works is not going to come out and trim private property, trees on prior property.
Okay, okay, yeah. So I guess, like, I understand why it's there and I support, I support the ordinance update as a whole. And I'm, I'm very much a pro-tree person. But I do think that that kind of pruning, when it's just like overhanging onto the sidewalk, to get a permit for that on a yearly basis for, for minor pruning, might be a little, so I don't know where there's wiggle room. And again, I know a lot of this is, is a matter of enforcement. So it's really hard to, I don't know, like if somebody just goes out and like trims everything down, that's, they're doing the right thing. So I just want to make sure that we, we won't be penalizing them for not getting a permit when they're actively taking proactive measures to maintain the vegetation on their property in a responsible manner. But obviously, we, we would have concerns with like major tree pruning, taking off significant limbs and those types of things. So I'm not sure how best to necessarily word my concern or how best to suggest a modification maybe to the ordinance language. But just to note that minor pruning of a, of, of tree limbs that overhang into a sidewalk to get a permit for that, I just know, looking at the trees on my block, my, my tree in my front yard, I, you know, maintain that myself. So I just feel like that would be a lot to ask for, for a permit.
Yeah, I think maybe we, I think maybe we need to tighten up the language. I think in fact, the intent was for, that the public shade tree be, shade trees are in the right of way, not a limb hanging over. And so maybe that needs to be taken out because I think the limb hanging over would then be, you wouldn't need a permit, but you need to make sure that you've got clearance on the sidewalk. I don't know that we can take, I mean, the, the language on pruning is actually in the current ordinance. People don't, it isn't common for somebody to come and ask for a permit. And the language is there really to prevent somebody from doing a bad pruning job so that, you know, it's, yeah, if you're taking care of the tree, nobody's going to bother you. And I think really we want to be looking, restrict this more to the trees that are in the right of way. Because, and the township will, you just need to call the Public Works and they will come and do the trimming.
Yeah, so I guess just the, the trigger of like, if you have a limb that overhangs into the sidewalk, it becomes a public tree and then a public tree requires a permit to prune it. I think maybe there, there could be some tweaking there so that it doesn't kind of automatically trigger somebody's larger tree that's setback, not in the right of way, you know, that overhangs. So there's a difference between maintaining a, a tree limb that grows over into a sidewalk versus a tree itself that's in the right of way.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, thank you. Otherwise, I didn't really have any other major-
Maggie, before you leave that point, I, something doesn't make sense here. The ordinance says I can cut down six trees on my property every year and I don't need a permit. And then I want to trim a tree that overhangs a sidewalk, I need a permit for that? There's a, it doesn't follow. I mean, I, I would think if I can trim my tree, if I can cut a tree down without a permit, I should be able to trim it without a permit.
Yeah, no, but I think if we're restricting it to tree, you can't cut down a, a tree in the right of way without a permit. So I, I think that's where the language of defining what trees we're talking about. If it's on your property, if it's on your property and it's not-
If it's on my prop, I can trim it, right? If it's on my property, I can trim it.
You can trim it, you can do whatever.
I don't need a permit for that.
Right, unless, now, we did put this in. The one thing is, we did, we talked about a heritage tree, which a tree that's the, that's on your property, that's greater than 30 inches, would require a permit.
To trim?
Not to trim, to take down.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. So, so Maggie, if you want to trim your tree, I think you can trim it as long as it's on your property without having to get a permit.
We're talking about the trunk of the tree.
Well, we're talking about trimming.
You're saying, you're saying that the trunk of the tree is on your property.
Right, yes, yes.
Right, that's what I meant, sorry.
Yeah, so I know some ordinances have a regulation that, that looks at the distance a tree is, like the trunk of a tree, either the edge of the trunk or what would be considered the center of the trunk, a distance from either the property line or the right of way or the sidewalk. So I've seen 10 or 12 feet or from the, the edge of the cartway, like 12 feet from that. So if you have the sidewalk, anything within 12 feet would be considered like a public street tree. So that's, that's another way that I've seen it. I know that you, you vetted a number of different ordinances to come to this. There's, you know, definitely pros and cons of using a kind of a hard and fast measurement rule because you can argue, oh, well, it's not quite, like, it's, it's, you know, if your setback is 10 feet, it's like, oh, well, it's like 10 and a half feet. So it's technically not, but like it operates as a public street tree. So that can lead to issues too. Yeah, so I, I guess I would just, I mean, I've made my point about the, the triggering of what makes it a street tree, a public street tree, when it really is just a tree on a person's front yard. And of course, that, it depends on, on the type of tree in terms of the actual benefit that it provides. And I guess the other, so the final question I have is just how, does the Shade Tree Commission have a plan, or the township, maybe Kelly, you can answer this, have a plan to advertise this to the public? Since this definitely impacts how people can treat the trees on their property. And I am willing to bet a lot of people don't know that these regulations are already on the books and that we're going to be updating them. And again, like I've said, a ton of trees have come down on my street over the past few years. And I, I would be willing to put money on, on the fact that they had no idea that there was this wonderful ecological benefit and aesthetic benefit of having those street trees and the importance of replacing them if they do remove them for safety reasons. So I'm just curious if there's going to be like a campaign, an information campaign that we can advertise to help promote street trees as part of the ordinance update and, and also just generally to promote canopy coverage across the township?
Sure, well, this, this ordinance coming to this commission, or to the, for the review for the Planning Commission was just brought up last Monday. So this is, yeah, kind of something that I haven't necessarily been completely involved in this entire time. However, I mean, we do have social media, we have a website, we have, the newsletter was just completed, so I won't be able to go into there. But in a future newsletter, you know, if the Shade Tree would like to put something together to, you know, help us out, you know, explain in simpler terms to people what we're doing, you know, what the ordinance is about, what amendments have been made. I think that'd be great.
Is it there a public hearing for this, Cal?
Uh, no, because this is not under the SALDO or the zoning, or the zoning ordinance. This is under 160, which is, I'm sorry, 170, which is a separate ordinance. But the commissioners thought it might be best to have it brought before the Planning Commission because it does affect the SALDO.
Okay. All right, thanks, Maggie.
Thank you.
Jesse?
No, I have nothing to add, thank you.
Nothing? David, I see you there.
Here.
Any comments?
Yes, what, what we have in front of us is not a restatement or a complete statement of what the new ordinance will be. It's only where there are changes, is that correct? Or is this supposed, intended to be the entire new ordinance?
It's, it's the entire new ordinance, yeah. It's, that's what's, hopefully I have two versions. One's the new ordinance and one was the red line version of it.
When I'm looking at the red line, I'm, I'm not seeing what happened to old 170-8A, which is replacement of trees lost during construction. So I think it would be helpful to have the entire, where all the changes are and where the deletions are to the old statute so we can compare that. If I'm missing it, maybe it's, maybe I don't see it.
Yeah, the only comment I can make is that it, it may have been redundant with other parts of the code. And so we just compressed it into that. But there have been several red lines, so we'd have to go back a couple of versions to it.
Well, specifically, I'm looking, the, the thing that I was focused on was 170-8A, which is replacement of trees lost during construction. And there, that establishes the one inch to four inch diameter ratio for replanting. But then it specifically says, and I I don't see an equivalent statement, in the new, it says a permit shall be required for the removal of any tree with a twenty-four inch caliper or greater. So that raises two issues. One is, there's no statement that says a permit shall be required for trees of a certain diameter. And secondly, you're you're increasing that diameter to twenty-four inches, I mean, thirty inches from twenty-four inches. And twenty-four inches to me seems already a pretty good sized, nice tree. And I don't see the reason why the replacement ratio for a twenty-four inch tree or greater than twenty-four inch needs to be increased to thirty.
I think.
The justification for that.
Yeah, the reasoning, we defined a heritage tree. If we define it as twenty-four inches and we're requiring, I think we, at this point, if you're on private property and you have a a tree, you want to take down a tree, you take down a tree. We are trying to protect the older trees. And we felt if we defined it too narrowly or twenty-four, that we would get more acceptance if we went to thirty inches. So that was, you know, in order to define, it's, the the ordinance needs to be consistent throughout. So we defined, we could have defined the heritage tree as twenty-four inches, but then it also would have impacted what trees that are homeowner could take down without a permit.
The thirty inches also comes from USDA Center for Urban Forest Research. That's that's their definition of a large statute tree, is a thirty inch diameter. So we follow that and it's also consistent with the other township ordinances that we look at.
So you're anticipating opposition to it and therefore anticipating the opposition and enlarging the size for the potential opposition you may get? And also to make it consistent with federal or other townships?
Certainly, they can consist.
To me, that's not enough, but I'd be interested in others, what others think. To me, twenty-four inches is a nice sized tree that I would just assume not see cut down or at least have to be replaced one to one.
You know, in looking at the definition of heritage tree, it looks like we downsized from thirty-six inches to thirty inches.
Well, then, you know, this is the, there have been many redline versions. So the, there was one with with thirty, the initial suggestion was twenty-four, we went to thirty-six and then we came back for thirty.
Okay.
I can get you the other redline version as well.
I'll take your word for it.
I think it would be helpful to have a comparison of what was and what you're now proposing without the interim versions.
Anything else, Dave?
Not for now.
Okay. Mr. Rerden?
I have several questions and I I first want to say that I have over five thousand specimen varieties on one of my properties in the township. Plantings, I have brought in thirty-five foot burrows and planted them on my property at considerable expense when I had to take one down that failed. I am a lover of my gardens and I am a believer in a lot of what you all are trying to accomplish. I would like to make certain that Haverford College, which is one of seven national arboretums and encompasses hundreds of acres. And there are only seven national arboretums, two of them happen to be in the Philadelphia region. One of them is Haverford's and the other one is Scott Arboretum at 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 Swarthmore. There's also one at Harvard and there is also one at Vanderbilt University. I know that one quite well as my alma mater, but and and there are several others and I've seen most of them. And I don't think that they're taking down of six trees should require a, they have been in the process for the last twenty years of getting rid of every single Norway maple on their property, something that nobody, a species of tree that nobody in the township should have. It's a mess of a tree and they take down fifty, sixty of them a year. And for that to become an issue for the township is plain ridiculous. Similarly, they're working on similar programs at at the, at two different golf courses on the, in the township. And to equate the maintenance and taking care and and the tree work that goes into either either of the golf courses in the township is beyond belief that this should be included. I have a next door neighbor who has recently acquired the the property beyond his one point two five acres to include another four hundred foot by thousand foot deep property over eight acres. And in this spring, I can't tell you the untold numbers of thousands of dollars he has spent in taking out all of the weed junk trees. He's brought in over fifty trees to put in. They're not huge trees, but they're good sized trees to replant that entire property and put it in permanent land back. But he wouldn't have touched it with this with this regulation in place because of his owners. And I have spent huge amounts of money on our newer property. I haven't sold my old property yet, but we just had a tornado come through between me and the next door neighbor and snap off trees and across the street at All Gate, there are fifteen trees that are topped from that tornado. And we, and and I have a a beautiful old walnut tree that I'm almost certain, we're not going to be able to save, but I put a lot of money in. But last month, my next door neighbor on the other side of me had a a tree come down, looked good, okay, hit my house, did thousands of dollars of damage, eighty-five foot tree. He generously, after, and I, it was my expense because it's called an act of God, and my one year old roof, okay, had seventeen holes in it and it poured into my house. And I'm going to tell you, he very nicely looked at all the other trees, assessed them and determined to take down seven trees before this last storm came. Or I would have had more trees in my yard than you can count at just in that one. I had five thousand five hundred walnuts in my front yard from the three walnut trees out front. I don't believe that you can equate multiple acre properties and turn around and say that they can't, that they are exactly the same as somebody whose property is a quarter of an acre. It just doesn't work. It's it's, there are, how, there are, when I was a boy on Cooper Town Road, there were six homes. Now they're about fourteen or fifteen, but it is a lot, it it is in a particular part of the township where there are large properties. And to turn around and say that each and every property is the same property doesn't equate. I have a tree in the front yard of my old house on Millbrook Lane that sat in front of the Japanese Exhibition Hall in the in eighteen seventy-six for the Centennial Exhibition. It was the very first dwarf Japanese maple brought into the United States. Bartlett Trees knows all about it. And because the base is only about a foot across, even though the tree's a hundred and fifty years old, it's not a heritage tree, but it's the very first dwarf Japanese maple ever brought into this country. It amazes me that we make our definitions and we don't have any room to figure out. I I don't see how you can turn around and say that that a person with ten acres of land has a six tree limit when when a person with a quarter of an acre may have five trees and he can take them all down. There's got to be some kind of proportionality to this, and I know you're struggling to get it done. But I don't see how you can throw those golf courses and the Haverford College Arboretum under these guidelines and even begin to say that there's any sense of fairness there because they were tirelessly to give us open space and beautiful areas in the township and they should be exempt from this.
Can I just respond that I, because this has come up before. Bradner has had the same ordinance, essentially the same ordinance for seven or eight years. They have a number of golf courses, they have a number of large colleges. The Shade Tree Commission says in that time they have not had issues dealing with them, they've been able to work everything out.
They may have said that, they also, when I went to get a permit for a friend of mine's new kitchen, they told us it's ninety days to wait for a permit for kitchens in Bradner Township. That doesn't make them smarter than we are. Okay, we can get one in three days.
And I'm not saying they're smarter than us, but it's it's their experience working with the same type of larger landowners.
Well, you know, if that's the case and they have larger landowners, I don't, I, we've got a six. It says anybody who takes down more than six trees, got to get permits. I just don't see it, I really don't. I am sorry, I feel like this is, this is, I feel like this is, I feel like it's a taking. And I am, I am, I am, I am, I am not the person for this ordinance unless it is modified in some way to take into effect that there's some kind of proportionality to the scale of the properties and that certain properties need to be given other, the idea of just simply always permit, 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 permit. So money, 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 money. It just, at some point, we have to turn around and say, you know, enough's enough. I'm sorry.
Chuck, you, just want you to understand that that there, this ordinance is coming to us tonight as a courtesy. Since it's not a subdivision or land development or zoning related ordinance, technically the planning commission, you know, doesn't have any say in the matter.
I understand.
It 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 seems as though as a private citizen, you have the same recourse all of us do as far as making your thoughts known to your commissioner.
But the reason this thing came to us today is not because it had no ordinance, it's because the Board of Commissioners requested that it come to us.
I understand, I understand.
So it was a quasi official request.
Okay. All right. I have a few comments and Paul, I hope you have a copy of the ordinance at your disposal there.
I have the redline that was.
Yep, I have. All right, I'm just going to go over the main comments that I have. What I'd like to do is just mail you my marked up version so you have it. Okay, take it under consideration, I don't waste everybody's time with my nitpicking.
That's fine.
But anyhow, to start off, the definition of caliper inches. I don't understand that.
A caliper inches versus?
The definition.
Okay. So this comes from the our our arborist in terms of how arborists measure a tree, replacement trees or new trees to be planted.
Right.
Different than trees that are being taken down or in trees that already exist.
I understand.
Diameter.
Where the, where do you take the measure?
Twelve inches or lower on the stem.
Twelve inches below what?
Standard measurement of nursery stocks diameter taken twelve inches or lower on stem depending on propagation method and size category.
Twelve inches or lower on stem, lower than what?
Lower than the twelve inches.
But where do you start? I mean, you got to start somewhere to measure down.
Twelve inches, you start at twelve inches.
All right, so it, is it?
At twelve inches, you would take that, that would be the caliper inch.
Would it be easier to say twelve inches above the root ball? Would that be easier weighted?
Off the root ball, yeah, off of the flare, the root ball.
I I suggest you make some, make a change where someone knows where they're starting from. I don't, I didn't understand that language, that's all.
Okay, fair enough.
The definition of grading, again, there's a lot of words in there that that are redundant or don't mean anything. I think grading is simply modifying the existing surface of the land.
We had not changed that definition from the original.
Excuse me?
We did not change that definition from the original, so whatever, I mean, I'm I'm happy to make it changes.
We can make it whatever we want, correct?
Correct.
Is there, is there a benefit to using the same definition of grading that we used in the SALDO?
There is no definition for grading in the SALDO.
Do we have a definition for grading in other ordinances that we can use?
We have a definition for earth disturbance, which is any activity which disturbs the existing surface of the land. Now, I'm satisfied with that definition also.
Or also chapter seventy-eight.
None of the ordinance in the SALDO do not have definitions for grading.
I feel like we should have definitions for grading in the SALDO.
It's all entirely in chapter seventy-eight for erosion and settlement control.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, under your tree replacement formula? Okay?
Yes.
We have references to diameter in there instead of DBH and caliper. I think we're going to trouble to find DBH and caliper, we should use them in our replacement formula, not rely on the word diameter.
All right, fair enough.
Okay, that happens under heritage trees as well. Under paragraph three, under tree replacement formula, the owner, in the first line, the owner will make a payment. I think that should say shall make a payment. Moving on to general regulations, which is paragraph C, subparagraph six. On all new building sites, the owner or contractor, you have that part?
Yes.
All right, I think we need to add a statement in there that says that the public shade tree shall be located at least twenty-four inches from all existing proposed property and right of way lines.
All right.
Okay. One seventy dash four A, subparagraph one C, rating in in excess of three hundred cubic yards. I'd rather see an aerial requirement like five thousand square feet. Five thousand square feet is the limit that of disturbance that would require an erosion and sedimentation control permit, correct, Chuck?
Yeah.
Okay, so three hundred cubic yards could be sixteen thousand square feet and six inches of the topsoil, that's three hundred cubic yards. And that's that's proving area. So I I think the square footage is more important than the cubic yardage.
Fair enough, again, that was in the original and we didn't.
I understand, yep. Going under paragraph, subparagraph eight, one seventy dash five.
Seventy dash five?
Yeah, it's it's right above one seventy dash six.
Okay.
Again, wording in there, the last sentence, oh. We're talking about in the event replanting is impractical. It says the applicant has the option of, shouldn't that say shall make payment to the township? It's like I have a choice of giving money or not.
I'll leave that to Jerry to.
That's good, okay. And that instead of the word contributions. That's good. Okay. And that instead of the word contributions, we say that payments received shall be utilized for replacement trees elsewhere in the township. At the rate set by the Board of Commissioners. That's wording similar to what we used before. 170 dash seven. Paragraph A. Again, you have, you're using the word diameter instead of DBH and clearing, I mean, caliper. And then one last, one last comment. And that goes back to definitions, the definition of tree. Would there be any objection to adding the word viable in there under that definition?
Under public shade tree?
No, under definition of tree.
Oh, the tree, the next one.
Instead of saying any, any viable woody perennial plant? What, I mean, suppose I have six dead trees or 10 dead trees on my property, what is the process to remove them? Do I need a permit to remove dead trees?
No.
No. Okay, that, that's why, there's nothing in here that, that lists any exceptions to this code or this ordinance as far as trees that might be diseased or dead. So an easy way to do it is define a tree as something that's viable or write a section about exceptions.
Okay.
That's all I had.
And you say you'll send those to me or to Jerry?
Can you give me your address and I'll mail them to you? Or you wanna email me and send me your address if you don't wanna give it over to TV Airways?
Better idea.
Or Kelly can give it to me. Can you give me?
Kelly can get it to you. She has my.
All right, I'll stick this in the mail for you guys, okay? You okay with that, Jerry?
Yeah, that'd be fine. If you, you could get it to me as well, that'd be great.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, we don't, we don't have to take any action, right, Kel?
That's exactly right. No, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for, for allowing us the opportunity to review this and, you know, if you have any other need for us to look at anything down the line, feel free.
Sounds great.
Daniel, I had a question, which is if, if you change the word to viable as opposed to creating an exception, how does the, what's the check on the landowner that the tree in fact was not viable?
Well, what's the?
Make who makes that decision and how does it get made?
Dave, what's the, what's the check on any property owner that takes down trees? It's gonna be his neighbors, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if you have a big backyard and you start cutting down trees, your neighbors might complain. If they don't complain, you get away with it. What can I say? The township doesn't have the resources to, to run around every day looking at seeing who's cutting down trees. I mean, it's kinda like an honor system, I would think.
I just think if you put viable into the definition, it invites people to say, well, that's not a viable tree. An exception they have to, and they, you have to demonstrate it by an arborist's certification, then at least something.
And that's an added burden to the property owner, I think.
True.
But anyhow.
I'm sorry, before we totally finish up, I do have two public comments, so.
It's good that you bring up the point. It's something that, that the commissioners can think about, Shade Tree Commission can think about, how they wanna modify, if they wanna modify that part of the code. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, no.
Thank you.
Hold on, the public comment related to the ordinance. Sorry, yes, there's two. And they're both quite lengthy. The first one is from Marion Golf Club. Dear gentlemen, we are writing you on behalf of Marion Golf Club in regard to the proposed amendment to ordinance number P10 2020, chapter 170 Trees, which is agenda item number three for review with the Planning Commission this evening. We are in full support of the township's efforts to protect, excuse me, to protect healthy trees and their importance to prevent flooding, soil erosion, and pollution within the township borders, as well as the beauty they provide to both private residence and public spaces. We recognize that drafting such amendments is a comprehensive process, and we are pleased to see that in chapter 170 dash A1, that one of the purposes, that the purpose is to provide latitude in the interpretation and application of township rules, standards, and guidelines when a reasonable and necessary, when reasonable and necessary to minimize the destruction of trees. And that in chapter 170B remains the intent, the article is not intended to cause hardship on any individual or private or public company that uses reasonable care and diligence to protect trees within Haverford Township. Marion Golf Club is a unique, in a unique position to have many trees on both our east and west golf courses, and we work hard to maintain their healthy, I'm sorry, their health and stability. We take great pride in the trees on our property and spend roughly $30,000 a year on plant health services to help preserve unique trees and specimen trees that call Marion home. In addition to preserving those trees, Marion has also been replanting according to the Shade Tree Commission current replacement formula. It has allowed Marion to pick better habitats and better specimens around their property to increase safety and protection for golfers, neighbors, and passerbyes. However, our primary focus is to maintain healthy turf grass surfaces on our golf courses. Golf course maintenance is a complex process, and there are instances where healthy trees compete with our ability to grow turf grass on specialized surfaces on the golf course. Turf needs four things to survive: water, air, sun, and soil. With a decrease in sunlight, the turf can decline and possibly die. This can have an extremely negative effect on course conditioning and playability, which would negatively, negatively impact the club's ability to preserve our greatest asset and host major events. Before removal or pruning of any healthy tree, and with the help of various professionals, some tree companies, USGA, et cetera, et cetera, Marion carefully documents our tree maintenance program and will continue to do so in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening, and we look forward to continued discussions regarding the proposed amendments to the ordinance. And the second, which is even longer. Sorry. It is, sorry, this is from Lanark Country Club. It has come to our collective attention that Haverford Township is in the process of deliberating and the enacting and ordaining of a new amended ordinance of chapter 170 Trees. As a long-tenured golf course superintendent, and I'm gonna mess this word up, agger? Tree person? Thank, no, it doesn't say arborist. If it was arborist, I would, we'll say arborist. I understand the need for an updated version of the ordinance. That being said, we would like to have an opportunity to discuss the planning commission, with the planning commission, the prospect of a unique variance for golf courses. As a manager of close to 130 acres of land, we would like, we would, we ask that the township consider our input to form a practical, affordable, and reasonable way forward. Haverford Township has a rich tradition of being one of the best places to live in the tri-state area. Part of that fabric is the presence of Lanark Country Club. As a club, it has contributed, hosting many state and local events, employed many local people, being part of the neighborhood since 1901, preserving a large, open, tractable land for the visual enjoyment of all. Over the decades, the golf course has done the following: operated successfully with the shade, it says shade commission, I believe they meant shade tree commission, aggressively planted more trees and other horticultural along, horticulture along the borders of the properties that were moved, spent in excess of $30,000 a year to perform best management practices for the trees. With the assistance of our full-time professional horticulturist, horticulturist, and my knowledge as a seasoned, I'm gonna just say arborist, guys, I'm sorry. We have made the sound decision in regards to balancing tree health and personal safety. They have even gone as far to use ISA-certified arborist to determine hazardous pruning slash removals. Lanark has made large financial investments to maintain and preserve our specimen trees and plant new trees that are indigenous and provide autumn color. Utilize shade studies using Sunseeker and ArborCom technologies to determine pruning slash removals of USGA green section. Arborists to document potential tree removals slash pruning. As we utilize all of the listed best practices for tree management, we are also responsible to distinguish ourselves from the other course with top-level turf grass conditions. To do that in some area of the course, we must tactfully remove some trees to provide a better microenvironment. A byproduct of these removals and pruning is a healthier stand of turf grass that is excellent for erosion control, noise reduction, and air pollution. As we move forward, we also face the rapid decline of ash trees, land and fly damage on maple and birch trees, and not to say increased drought and flooding damage. Compounding that, many of the courses throughout the United States were overplanted with non-indigenous trees in the early 1920s and 1930s that have now started to reach the end of their life cycle. Sometimes, those factors require us to make rapid decisions on tree pruning and/or removal strictly for life safety. We would request that based on our extensive knowledge and educated management of trees, that the township would consider allowing us to be more dexterous in the ability to trim, remove, replant, and replant trees on the golf course. We would also be happy to go into more detail via an in-person or Zoom meeting at a later date. Lanark is committed to collaboration with the Planning Commission to form an intelligent and viable ordinance that is beneficial to all involved. Just like you, we would like to take proper amount of time to assist in developing an ordinance the right way the first time. Thank you for your consideration. We are looking forward to speaking with you soon.
Okay, thank you.
Since I, we aren't making any official recommendations or anything of that sort, what I think would be more appropriate is if I forwarded these letters to the Shade Tree Commission and potentially the Board of Commissioners for their interaction, which seems to make more sense.
Sounds good. Thanks, Kel. All right. All right, Ken. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Have a good night. Appreciate the comments.
Yep, have a good night.
Thank you both.
Okay, moving right.
Chuck Foster, you know about this? Well, let me try to explain it briefly.
Why don't you?
If I could. So Delcor is a Delaware County regional authority. It's one of the authorities that operates in the area and actually receives sewage from the Haverford Township. There's, there's, and primarily what their purpose is, Delcor is conveyance of sewage, and they also do treatment. So I don't know if anybody actually looked at, went in and looked at the, the information that Kelly sent, but there is a map in there of the county, and it does give you the Delcor service area, okay? Most of which is in eastern Delaware County along the river. They do operate a treatment plant down there. They operate numerous large pump stations that are on the order of 40 and six, or 40 and 60 million gallons a day, okay? So it, it's basically conveyance and collection, conveyance and, in some aspects, treatment, okay? What happens, how that affects Delaware County? First of all, they wanna sell their system, okay? They've reached an agreement with Aqua to sell their system. The DEP requires that they go through a planning process. Anybody who, anybody who sells their system goes through a planning process, evaluates all the alternatives that may be, you know, out there that may be, may be viable to them, and gets input from all the municipalities that they service, okay? So that's why this is before you right now. In a, in a roundabout way, Delcor services the Haverford Township, so what they are looking for is input, any input on planning aspects that the township and specifically the Planning Commission might have with regard to this sale. Now, having said that, let me just briefly tell you what happens when you flush a toilet or turn on your water in a township, okay? There's two basins in this township, okay? There's a Coggs Creek Basin and there's a Darby Creek Basin. This, Delcor only services the Darby Creek Basin, and that services only about thirded township, okay? The other two thirds is serviced by, goes through Upper Darby and goes directly to the city of Philadelphia. In the Darby Creek Basin, sewage from Haverford Township first goes to Radnor-Haverford-Marple Sewer Authority, which owns interceptors along the Darby Creek, okay? It then discharges to other interceptors that are owned by the Darby Creek Joint Authority, and then eventually goes to Delcor's pumping stations. They pump that sewage to the city of Philadelphia's wastewater treatment plant. So you're going through a number of entities here, and, you know, as we saw tonight, some of the things that happen when somebody wants to add a connection or do a subdivision or something like that, they must get a sewage facilities planning module, just like Greenbrier. That means they must go and get capacity sign-offs from every entity from Haverford Township to the city of Philadelphia. And makes, and, and what's that saying is we have capacity, enough capacity in our system for that particular connection. So that's, that's how Delcor plays into Haverford Township. Haverford Township owns their own sanitary sewer system. They will still own their own sanitary sewer system after this. They will still control the planning aspects of their system, okay? The only thing that's really gonna change in, in respect to this is, you know, somebody submits a planning module, and once, you know, needs a capacity sign-off, it will, you know, if the sale does go through and is approved by DEP, it'll change, that entity will change from being Delcor to being Aqua, okay? So, you know, in, in short, there, there's, there's not much change in, in this sale going from Delcor to Aqua in terms of Haverford Township, so. And again, some of the planning aspects, and again, this is, this is more related to planning than it is operational or, or financial or anything like that. But some of the planning aspects that are typically done by the township are Act 537 updates or planning modules, okay? That will not change. The township will still initiate that and everything. There is a chapter 94 reports, which have to be done yearly for the township, and that's a report that goes to DEP that gives the status of the system, the new connections, typically how much flow there is, are there any problems or SSOs, sanitary sewer overflow, anything like that? And then there's also the planning modules and everything that are done. So again, all that will be the same as it is today, with the exception of the change from Delcor to potentially Aqua when this goes through. So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions or wants more clarification on, on anything. I'd be happy to go over in more detail if, if that's the case.
The, the truck lines along Darby Creek, Chuck, they'll still be owned by the individual authorities along the route?
That's correct.
Okay.
It'll still be owned by Radnor-Haverford-Marple Sewer Authority and Darby Creek Joint Authority, yes.
Okay. The only thing I saw in all that stuff that Kelly sent us is in the resolution that they offered. They say something about they identify alternative number one as being this selected plan, which is sale to Aqua PA. But in the report, that's listed as alternative number two.
Yes, you are correct.
That's, that's the only thing I noticed.
And, and they also do elaborate a little bit on the sale of why they're doing this. You know, if, if anyone has a chance to read that, but in, in, in summary, they have a lot of, they have a lot of agreements with a lot of municipalities, including the Water Department. They're regulated by the DEP, by the EPA. They have, Delaware County is a very old infrastructure. They have a lot of eye and eye in the system. They have a lot of aging system, and they have a lot of, of expense. They're looking at millions and millions of dollars of expense in, in trying to rehab the system to meet all those requirements. So in, in, in their mind, it's easier for them to sell the system, give it to somebody else, let them do it. And I believe they also have a statement in here, any excess proceeds will be put in a fund to try to lower, you know, future rate increases.
Okay. But there's a good possibility that rates will go up as a result of the sale.
Yeah, it's possible.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any comments? What do we need, Kelly?
I suppose just maybe if there's no comments, a motion saying to.
Other than the typo in the resolution.
Right, but so we were, this meeting was for the, to address the public comment requirements for Delcor, so that we can forward them any of those that we have, or send them a letter saying that we don't have any comments.
I'm, I'm okay saying we have no comments. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like everybody nodded. Yes, Kel, so.
Great. Great.
Township Planning Commission has no official comments regarding Delcora's plan to sell their facilities to Aqua PA.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, finally, we have minutes from our July meeting. I believe they've been circulated, everyone's had a chance to weigh in on those, anybody have any further comments they wanna make? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from our July planning commission meeting.
Second.
Uh, Kelly, take your call.
Sure. Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudden. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I muted you because your papers were, let's see.
He said yes.
Yes, sorry. Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Okay. That's about it for tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless someone else has something they wanna bring up or mention. Nobody does seem to wanna talk anymore, so.
I certainly don't, that was a lot of talking for me tonight.
All right, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the odds have it, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we are, I have, I have a submission, I think the next, we are going to be meeting on September tenth, so.
September tenth?
September tenth, so unless otherwise something happens, we will see you.
See you in September. Everybody, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Bye.